Yes, ma'am.
All right, we are back and next we have the county administrator's report, Mrs. McGary.
As all of you know, the comprehensive plan was adopted on March 20th with the next step to be review and consider proposed zoning and/or subdivision ordinance amendments identified by Berkeley Group as bringing the ordinances in line with the adopted comprehensive plan. Once this final deliverable document is ready, we will distribute it to the board and the planning commission. Planning commission may, time-wise, will likely get this first and will be able to review it at their May meeting and then the board will follow suit at the June meeting. So in conjunction with this review, staff will have a proposal from Berkeley Group to amend their contract for zoning and subdivision ordinance update, which would include state code compliance as well as comprehensive plan continuity. We are still in the, well, not we, but the event planning permitting continues for the Stars and Spurs Fourth of July event with the free fireworks to be displayed at the Oak Bridge Event Venue on July 4th in collaboration with the Livingston Volunteer Fire Department. The Fire Department will hold a Fourth of July parade in Livingston on June 29th with the Stars and Spurs invited to participate in order to help advertise and promote the event. Marketing of the event and ticket sales has begun. The event website is www-stars-spurs.com. Staff does need further direction from the board regarding the previously approved contribution to the event. The board directed staff to issue the county's financial contribution directly to Oak Bridge, however, in arranging to do so, the venue representatives indicated they were not really amenable to receiving those funds directly. So other options include paying event vendors or the rodeo directly or making the contribution to the LLC, Events Invest LLC. This LLC is organized with the local resident, LaZelle Jacobs, who's vice president of Bulverock Hard Cider, as the CFO and primary contact for that organization. So if I could get some, I guess, level of direction on where you'd like the contribution to go, given it was directed to go a certain way initially.
We need that today?
Today would probably be best.
Okay.
Well, have they already paid for it yet or are they waiting on us?
Neither. They've already secured the venue with their own funding. It's just the county's contribution to the event overall at this point, so it'll make me feel more comfortable, given that the LLC has been created and established versus, you know, initially when things were just in the planning phases, Mr. Venture was here and he, you know, it's not a familiar phase for you all.
I think that was the main concern upfront is that we just weren't comfortable stroking a check to somebody who just walked in the door that we didn't know. A lot has gone on, a lot of planning since then, and it looked like we are going to have a real event.
I would say that's definite.
Not just a concept at that time, so. But I'll entertain some additional comments from board. So the LLC, that is more local. What role does the promoter of Stars and Spurs have with the LLC? You know, what's the relationship?
I believe he's a member of the LLC. I don't know what officer position he holds. I wasn't able to find that out.
But there is, there's some relationship there.
Yes, yes. And I did pull their filing with the SEC, so they are definitely a registered organization and official.
With local representation?
Yes, with local representation.
Does this seem to be their only event that they do or this is a new business that's doing other events elsewhere?
I think they plan to do other events. I think they're a relatively new LLC and just kind of getting going in the event arena. They haven't been in existence for a great deal of time.
I think they just made it.
Any direction from staff?
I mean, I think the LLC would be the best bet.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I don't have, I don't have heartburn with, with the LLC. I mean, I understand our reservations at first, but we've seen a lot of activity and good faith moving forward. I'm comfortable with that.
They have investment of approaching a hundred thousand, I believe, into the event already, so.
And I know they're securing vendors and things are moving, moving right along.
Right. I mean, ticket sales are happening.
Yeah.
So do you, do we need a resolution or?
No, just a consensus, some direction from the board.
My two cents is we direct funds to the LLC.
I, no, I mean.
I mean, you never hold back.
I don't. I was hoping. I am supportive and I'm excited for this event. I'm rooting for its success, no doubt. I do like the practice of us paying some kind of entity because it just makes me feel like that direct and I understand. It sounds as though they've engaged in a contract to the venue, so if we did anything, put in the memo line reimbursement of 10K or something of that nature and I'd feel comfortable. Does that make sense? Basically, they went, they used their cash upfront. This was our intent. Put in the memo, this is for reimbursement of that. And that's where I would be comfortable.
I don't see a problem with that.
Reimbursement of 10,000.
Whatever the number was. It was 10K, right?
I think so, yes.
Or the venue.
Yes, that's what I would much rather say, yeah.
I would just like to say, I agree. I'm excited about this event. He, we have made it clear he's probably not getting it next year, but he really muddied the water with that. I mean, you know, just.
Yeah.
It makes it slimy. Anyway, moving on.
As long as we're indicating it's a reimbursement than the intent that this board had, I feel fine with that, so I can rest my vote on that.
Any comments to the contrary? If not, we will direct staff to reimburse to the, send the funds to the LLC.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, moving on. As far as the Board Mr. Rural Historic District, DHR has received a complete nomination package and will present it to the Virginia State Review Board and the Virginia Board of Historic Resources on Thursday, June 20th. They'll be recommending to the National Register of Historic Places and its inclusion in the Virginia Landmarks Register. We do have an upcoming public meeting or hearing on the district at 6:00 PM tomorrow night, May 15th, here at the courthouse in Livingston. DHR is the responsible party for sending notification letters to all of the included properties in the district and adjacent property owners. We've been talking somewhat about the regulatory changes to emergency services drug kit exchange that are coming down the pike. The U.S. Food and Drug Administration, FDA, and Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, have federal regulatory changes going into effect November 27, 2024, affecting how EMS providers are able to restock their endless drug kits. Virginia Board of Pharmacy was tasked with drafting and adopting emergency regulations that will be effective for up to 18 months or until new permanent regulations are put into place. These emergency regulations must undergo an administrative review process with the Office of the Attorney General, Department of Planning and Budget, and the Governor, which may take approximately 10 weeks to complete. John Atkins and Curtis Sheets and other stakeholders statewide have been instrumental in providing feedback and attending meetings on these emergency regulations, which has resulted in some beneficial changes that are highly responsive to the needs of EMS providers. So as far as what the county is going to do to comply with these new board pharmacy adopted regulations, Wintergreen Fire and Rescue Services is in the process of obtaining a pharmacy license, which will allow them to replenish the drug boxes of all other Nelson EMS agencies. This in turn allows these agencies to stay licensed as advanced life support providers. There will be two secured card key access and alarm doors with security cameras that will house a pharmacy supply vending machine. These will be located in the career staff facilities from which agencies will restock their drug boxes, so there will be two of them in two locations within the county that will be utilized. Wintergreen Fire and Rescue Services will manage the program and will develop MOUs for chiefs and captains to execute in order to participate. The FY25 proposed budget already contains funding for the anticipated costs associated with the program changes. I did provide the adopted red lines, board pharmacy regulations, and a list of some of the more relevant approved changes that are attached to my report. So definitely want to thank John and Curtis for all their work on this because it has come a long way since.
It's quite a mess.
Yeah. Yes, definitely. So I think we're moving in the right direction as far as the solution for Nelson County. We did receive a STIRP property, Virginia Forest stewardship plan as completed by Bill Perry of the Department of Forestry. His recommendations include the first step of conducting a prescribed burn of one-third, approximately 32.4 acres of the parcel of recently thinned Loblawli Pines, which is labeled as parcel A in the report, and then planning for a commercial thinning of the 128 acres of Loblawli Pond in parcel B. Additionally, he recommends identifying and treating any populations of invasive plant species on all parcels. The Department of Forestry can conduct a prescribed burn for $25 an acre and they would do 20 acres at a time. The county will need to hire a conservation service to address the invasive species and also hire a forestry consultant and logging company to perform the commercial thinning. Mr. Perry is sending county staff contact information for consultants that do all of this type of work and then we can decide how to move forward. I believe I attached the forestry plan with my report as well, if you'd like to read up on that. Any questions on that one here?
I read it all and the plan all looks really good. However, I think it would be a really good idea to do two things. One, I think the county really needs to have a survey of the property, which we don't have yet, and there is some question about some of the boundary lines, so if we can, if we could see to take some of the money that we've, that was returned back that we have dedicated to that, that I think really should be the necessary first step. The other is that if we would get together the advisory committee to review this and maybe to make a recommendation. I had some preliminary conversation with Virginia Master Naturalists and it's very, it's certainly feasible and maybe even a great idea to have them involved on the invasive species scenario, so we don't have to contract with a company to do that and they can also have an increased sensitivity to areas that, you know, that need to remain non-treated for whatever reason. So anyway, if we had an advisory committee meeting, we could review all that and make a recommendation, bring it to the board.
All right, sounds great. Thank you.
So at what point do things get run by the STIRP family? Because it seems like we have to do them.
Well, the STIRP family due to the property to the county, so the county is the current owner of the property.
It just seems like they stay strangely involved.
The family has not been involved. There's an advisory committee. It doesn't include anyone from the STIRP family that, you know, that was formed, you know, which includes Department of Forestry, myself, Susan McSwain, Pete Rose, Jerry West, and others to, you know, to help carve, you know, going forward. There was a lot of preliminary work done through Wintergreen Nature Foundation. They did a lot of preliminary work. They even came up with a, with a primary, you know, master plan that of course is, you know, just historical. It has nothing whatsoever to be going forward, but, you know, if you want to know more about how all that is working, the only, you know, the STIRP property was due to the county with the intention that it be primarily nature preserve and that was really the only direction that I'm aware of that we have.
I think we'll relook at the D, but I think there's some outdoor recreation that would be allowable as well. I think, I think Pete Rose stays in pretty good contact with one of the daughters. I can't recall her name at the moment. And I think we've just had some brief conversations with her just about some of the previous two grant submissions we had, just kind of keeping her in the loop as to what we're, what the county's up to with the property.
It'd also be good to find out what cost share monies might be available that the forestry plan kind of outlined and there was nothing in the plan and the timeline under this year with the exception of some of the invasives work. So it would give us plenty of time to try to see if we can get some reimbursement or monies to go towards that.
Okay. Our next item on the report has to do with our 2021 home American Rescue Plan project funds. So these funds were allocated through the TJPDC or allocated to TJPDC and member jurisdictions were allotted project funds of about 312,664 each to benefit qualifying populations as prescribed by the program guidelines. So in December of 2022, the Nelson County Community Development Foundation, as the administrator of our, the county's traditional home funds, was authorized to use these funds in conjunction with their regular home funds of about 175,000 to construct rental housing to address the homelessness of Nelson citizens or those at risk of homelessness with a prioritization of elderly and disabled and families with children. The foundation has begun a project on the property they own on St. James Church Road in Roseland, and this will entail getting the site engineered for three duplex buildings, which would be six units, and then building the first unit with construction of other units to follow as funds might allow going forward. Our Livingston Front Street Sidewalk Improvements Tap Grant is still with the Commonwealth Transportation Board. It will be considered for approval by them in June. The Lynchburg District had a public hearing that was held on May 1st, 2024 at the Lynchburg offices. They're still taking public comments by email until May 20th, 2024. And so if you want to email any comments, it's six-year-program@v.virginia.gov.
Question. On the Livingston plan, I know we've approved the branding. Will we be kept in the loop when that is moving forward and there's actually stuff, you know? Do we know how that, you know, who's in charge? Is that Maureen, I guess, or?
Maureen's involved with that somewhat and then the Livingston Village Association.
You know anything?
Yeah, I believe there are a couple of different entities, the Heart of Nelson being one of them, that's going to be producing some t-shirts and some hats and all that and they're kind of working on some designs and respecting the guidelines that we gave them. So I think they're in the midst of trying to figure out what they want that to do.
What they want to do.
Yeah. Beyond that, as far as I know, if you're just interested in utilizing it, the point of contact has been longer.
No, I just was curious where we are with.
Yeah, but if there's any entity that wants to, they just have to pay.
Pay the, yeah, pay the fee.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
So we're expecting a draft report on the Livingston System Water and Sewer Capacity Study by the end of May. That's all I have to report on that. Hopefully we'll be getting that soon as a staff to review before it comes to the board for a formal presentation. On FY25 state and local budgets, you all probably have seen that a budget deal was reached within, with the state legislators and the governor has signed it. That all happened yesterday. We're still waiting on details on how this will affect us locally, especially with K-12 education. The board has scheduled a public hearing on our local budget Tuesday, June 4th at 7:00 PM, and we have scheduled its adoption and appropriation to follow seven days later at the regular meeting on June 11th. So any changes to the budget may be made by the board between the public hearing and its adoption, in which case, if you want to have any additional meetings to make some changes, that would need to occur either between June 4th and June 7th, or if we push beyond the June 11th adoption date, it would be just anytime before June 30th. June 30th is the latest date we have to adopt the budget by state code. Staff is currently working on some how we address the bond financing proceeds and anticipated expenditures. Linda was going to meet with David Foley today after his presentation and figure out what we need to do with that, so that may be a staff addition to the FY25 budget in between the public hearing and adoption. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Well, I will not report on the IMJ, which would have to do with the Nelson County Broadband Authority, it's dissolution and all of that, because you've already acted upon that, so thank you very much. And that's all I have, unless you have any other questions.
Anybody have questions for Mrs. McGary? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we will move on to board reports. Who wants to go first? Anybody have anything to report? Any committees or?
I have one.
Okay.
On April 24th, I attended a breakfast award ceremony from the Virginia American Red Cross, the local chapter, and the CEO of JABA, Marta Keen, received a servant leader hero award. And the executive director flagged Marta's visionary leadership, compassionate spirit, and commitment to making a positive impact on the lives of seniors that has set her apart as a true servant leader. And Nelson County was represented at the, at that meeting and Marta was really honored and I was happy to have been there for that, for her, so just wanted to let you all know.
Very good, thank you.
I should probably report that I went to the EDA meeting where they voted, obviously for the bond initiative, but I spoke and I mentioned that I hoped that Candy and Maureen would do some deep dive on EDAs that have been successful in the state of Virginia and what the relationship is between those EDA boards and the board supervisors. I also mentioned that I had an expectation that the members of the EDA board do the training that's suggested by the state and it was my hope to inspire some of us to do that training as well, maybe even together with them. And I really feel that economic development in the county is important and that if we were able to create jobs or some sort of industry in this county, it would change the county for decades. And so that was my empowering speech to the EDA and I hope that you all will stand behind me in that. And initially, we had a couple of emails on two different EDAs, but I don't think we've had any more information on that, so I will be getting more information to you all, but it's my hope that we can meet and talk about making them a little more, I don't even know, productive.
I think a good example of an EDA, I was part of a development down in Pennsylvania, Danville, and probably the most active EDA that actually kind of had some dollars and cents and some level of influence, absent, not absent the local authority, but kind of in a complement and some level of absent, is the Danville, Pennsylvania context. And I would strongly encourage you to look at that because if you see what, with that change with the casino, there was so much that they had their hands in, both with state, federal stuff, local stuff, and then talk about bonds, infrastructure stuff, because there are so many proffers happening, EDAs become a necessary part of a lot of kind of proffering and some of the experiences that I've seen. So if there's one I would suggest, it'd probably be that context of those two. Now, they're kind of messing with a few extra zeros than we probably ever could imagine, but I think it's a good model. And whatever information you have on the training, I certainly am all about going to.
Well, and I offered saying that if funding is, it seems to be a ubiquitous thing with these EDAs, that I have expectations on return on investment and they need to do the education and come up with ideas. They're not just going to get money from them, so. You were there. I don't know if you felt I conveyed that message well enough, but that was my intention.
Any other reports?
We had the PDC meeting. I kind of elaborated a little bit on the SEDs. When you look at, obviously, our county from itself and then just the at-large story of economic development and just that picture's kind of intriguing. I really do strongly suggest you guys look at it. Some of the data in there, you can die, choose to digest or not, and that's probably a fair assumption whichever way you choose, but there is a lot of great points in there, especially as it's related to, who knew? I didn't realize, you know, that one of the largest, huge employer in our, the Charlottesville area, metrophile's area, is Department of Defense and the billion, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that leads to in terms of jobs, supporting jobs and all of that, so. And with Waynesboro getting another piece of that, you know, what does that mean for Afton? When you get 200 or 150 people making six figures move to an area instantly, a lot of things change. So that's, that's really the only piece I have that I can think of. Randy, what did I miss at PDC?
I got nothing else?
All right. Harvey, got anything?
EMS council didn't meet and I have nothing to report from social services. They continue to do a great job. Appointments. So we have some appointments before us. Most of them don't need action until June. However, I do want to pull a couple of them out if we could consider approval of the three appointments for Nelson County Economic Development Authority and MACA, Board of Directors. The others will hold off until June.
All right, so which ones do you want to vote on? The MACA?
MACA and Nelson County, yeah, the EDA.
All right, that's fine. It's, MACA we got to do because we have, I don't think we have anybody in there right now.
Right.
Well, I'd like to, to move that we appoint Ann Michie to the MACA Board of Directors.
Second.
Ann Michie, she's the applicant that we have for the MACA. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Any volunteer?
On that note, we will take a roll call vote.
Dr. Ligan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes, very good, thank you. Next, we have the EDA. We have two reappointments and one vacancy being filled. Carlton Ballou, Deborah Brown, Deborah Brown being reappointed and Jerry Lloyd filling the vacant spot.
Can we vote on that as a slate?
Yes, that's what I'm recommending, that we entertain a motion for the EDA as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we approve the appointments of Carlton Ballou, Deborah Brown, and Jerry Lloyd.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Dr. Ligan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes. Thank you all, and Amanda, we will revisit the others at the June meeting. Thank you. All right, next we have correspondence. Does anyone have anything to share? Fan mail, thank you notes, anything like that?
Just some V dot stuff, but I've coordinated directly with Robert, so.
Anybody? Correspondence directives? Anyone have directives for staff? Hearing none, we will move into a closed session, which we do have need for, and Mr. Reed, if you could. if you could, read our closed session motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Nelson County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session to discuss the following as permitted by Virginia Code Sections 2.23711A1. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And A3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we need a roll call vote on that?
Yep, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Far.
Yes. All right. Do we need-